Good. Thank you. I call to order the meeting of the common council for May 29, 2020. Clerk?
Well, we're present, Your Honor.
We have a quorum and we will proceed. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Kathy LeFave. I pledge allegiance.
Are we ready?
Yes, go ahead, Alder LeFave.
Um, yes. In this time of, um, the virus and, uh, the some of the people have to stay at home, uh, they're concerned about, uh, what's going on. I'm just asking that everybody take a moment of silence and to, um, think of those who have passed with this virus and those that are in hospital. So let's just please take a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone.
You, Alder. All of the minutes.
To approve.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Any corrections? Seeing no requests. Favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes have been approved. On, on the agenda here, I would entertain an amendment. We just have the, um, the Committee of the Hall and the resolutions out of order here. So I would entertain an amendment to, to move the, of the whole just before resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Gerlach, seconded by Alder Scannell to amend the agenda, um, to put the, uh, resolutions just after Committee of the Hall. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it. The agenda has been amended. Entertain a motion to approve the amended.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The amended agenda has been approved. Report by the mayor. So as, uh, as most of you have probably seen, you know, our case number continues to creep up here in Brown County, thankfully. Um, it's slowing down, but it's still sizable and we still have the largest per capita number in the state of Wisconsin in terms of counties. So, um, you know, we still have a significant fight in front of us and, uh, and so just encourage you all to continue setting a good example. Alder Stevens with the message behind him, I think is, is, um, you know, the, I mess up. We just need to continue to respect the physical distancing guidelines that have put, been put forth by our public health experts. Remain, remain home, you know, whenever possible and, and when we're out and about, um, to be, you know, wearing masks and, uh, and of course washing your hands as, as often as possible to continue to slow down the, the spread of coronavirus here in Green Bay and in Brown County. Um, but I think we also need to, to learn how to live with it, right? So as we turn towards summer, uh, you know, I think we'll, we'll see, uh, many more outdoor activities taking place. And, and from my perspective, from the city's perspective, I think we want to encourage that behavior as long as it's done responsibly. Um, I would anticipate our, our parks, you know, making some announcements here in the coming days, um, opening things up a bit as well. So I think it is, you know, it is a great opportunity with the weather turning hopefully, um, for us all to get out and, and, um, engage in some responsible physical activity outdoors, um, because I think we've all been looking for that for some time. Um, and as I said, you know, the, the are, are still with us. They will continue to be with us for some time, but I think, um, as important really are the, uh, the social and economic impacts that we're going to be dealing with as a community and as a state and nation. Um, and so I just wanted to touch on the allocation of our cares dollars, um, through the CDBG distribution here that, that will be, um, debated farther down our agenda. Um, you know, been very impressed with, um, way that our community and economic development staff has come together on this in, in short order. Um, happy with the, uh, the plan that's been put together. Glad that our redevelopment authority has approved it. I think this allocation really does meet a diverse set of needs that we have here in the city. And, um, you know, it's certainly not the end all be all. I'll be doing everything I can to advocate for additional support from state and, and federal governments, um, but happy with, with what's been proposed and just would encourage, uh, council support for that allocation. Uh, and that concludes my report. Onto announcements. Let me see if I can.
Mayor, if I?
Yes, go ahead, Alder Johnson. Um, I'm, I'm not seeing speakers, so, you know, continue to press your buttons, but I'm, I'm not seeing it right now. So just feel free to wave to get my attention as well. But Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to take a, a brief moment here to commend, um, our department heads and our Director of Finance, uh, for the exceptional job that they did in pulling together, uh, the original, the initial draft of the five-year capital improvement plan. You know, it's something that the general public may not always see, uh, but sometimes as Alders, when we open up these, um, these agenda packets and we see like in this case, a 600-page document and you realize, um, you've got a lot of reading, um, and, and obviously in this particular instance, a big chunk of that was the, the capital improvement plan. And so, um, it was certainly no small feat and I can tell that the staff put a, a lot of time into this, but just speaking as a member of council, um, I tell how useful this document is going to be for us as we, we chart through our financial decisions that we need to make here in the next couple of years. So, uh, again, just want to thank staff, department heads, but also again commend them. This was a lot of work and we really do appreciate it. So thank you.
Well-made point, Alder. Thanks for that. Uh, Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few tonight. Uh, on Downtown Green Bay's Facebook, uh, on Wednesdays for the rest of this month in May at 7:00 PM, you can virtually visit an artist's studio. You'll meet the artist to their studio and even have the opportunity to buy some, support your local artists. Uh, also downtowngreenbay.com, uh, continues to have an updated running list of restaurants offering delivery, takeout and curbside pickup options, online shopping for local boutiques, gift cards and more. So keep an eye on that. Uh, also tomorrow morning, the Chamber of Commerce, I believe with the county, uh, is putting on a virtual meeting about, um, uh, getting, opening up, uh, the economy. Uh, it'll start at 8:30 and then they've got, uh, every oh, let's see, it goes 8:35 to 8:45, general guidelines for reopening and then 8:45 to 9:25 restaurants. So if you're interested in restaurants, that'd be the time to ask questions or get information on that. Then after that is, uh, 9:25 to 10 is hospitality and lodging. After that retail, entertainment, amusement, gatherings and outdoor recreation, professional services and public facilities. Being a cultural, transportation and warehouse wholesale trade and it'll all be wrapped up by 12:20 to 12:30. So that's tomorrow morning, starting at 8:30. And then lastly, I'd just like to add, um, I think the mayor's suggestion of getting out, getting physical exercise is an excellent one. And if anybody wants to do that, my lawn needs mowing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder LeFave.
Yes, um, I have, um, I wanted to mention that, uh, with the flooding, um, I was really surprised that where it occurred and of course it's because of all the rain, but, uh, here on the bay, we dodged a bullet again. And although my backyard and some of the backyards, we have huge puddles from the rain, the water is, uh, from all the flood and then from all this rain, the water cable's so high and I just can't take all this water, but we're doing fine here, everybody. And, uh, it's a good news. But also wanted to, uh, being aware, um, to all the Alders, when you're driving around, um, be alert because I almost hit a UPS truck on Webster Street. I was coming along and he was parked without his flashers on. He stopped and parked and all of a, I mean, I was driving and he was there. I just had time to get around him on the other lane. I could quick look and make sure there's nobody coming. But if there had been another car, I would have had to put my brakes on and I might've hit the back of him. This is not legal. I did check. This is not legal. They cannot be doing this. There's a moving violation. And also landscapers have been doing this also. They park in the street, driving lanes, not in the people's driveways. That, those alters should be reported. The, um, some are moving violations, some are parking violations. You can call the police or you can call, um, downtown and report them. This has to be, um, something I think we have to be vigilant on. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Okay, onto appointments. Uh, we have one appoint, one new appointment here to board of review.
All moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, I believe seconded by Alder Galvin. Any comments? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
His name? The ayes have it. The appointment is confirmed. Onto ordinances, second reading for adoption.
You may, under suspension of the rules, take up items one and two with a roll call vote.
Who's to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by
Steyer.
Alder LeFave.
Either one, doesn't matter.
All in favor of this motion to suspend the rules, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to adopt J2. Please use the board.
Mayor minds acting up again. I vote yes. Steyer.
Thank you, Alder.
Oh, okay, I got it.
Alder Burnett, it's not registering.
Mine's not working. I'm a yes. I'll sign out and sign back in. I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Pass 12-0. Onto report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Ald Alder, which is the report of redevelopment authority from the meeting on May 12, 2020. Any items to be handled separately here?
One. Number two.
One and two. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and two. Any wishes regarding item one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson, I believe.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. Just one minor amendment to this. Um, I'd made the request at RDA and while I understand that staff might have just, uh, understood the request, I really wanted it to be documented. And so I would just ask that this be amended to refer, uh, to the revolving loan fund committee, an item to discuss the $100,000 allocation for the pandemic relief fund. Um, the reason I'm asking for that amendment is because we, we passed the original, uh, $100,000, um, with certain restrictions or provisions targeting, you know, to, to meet certain demand. I just want the revolving loan fund committee to have an opportunity to review how that's performing and whether or not this additional $100,000 should be used in that same manner or if it should be modified to meet a different demand. So I would just, again, but the amendment would be to refer the $100,000 portion of this allocation to the revolving loan fund committee for further discussion.
Very good. And I think that is an accurate recap of the discussion at RDA. Um, so the amendment has been made.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it.
Approve as amended.
Second.
Motion made to approve as amended, uh, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, I had my.
Oh, apologies, uh, Alder Weary.
That's all right. Thank you. I don't know if you can see the light, if that's not working maybe, but, um, I did have a question about the 29,000 under public service activities for homelessness assistance, funding for future use, TBD. Um, what are the uses and, and who will be administering that?
Heard. So we will go to, um, Assistant Director Renee Wake, if she's online. Otherwise, Director Bonk.
Hello, everyone. Um, we were thinking of Alder Weary is that, um, currently we are using some cares money, um, that we had an allocation of leftover block grant money to assist homeless folks that are trying to, um, stay safe and isolate. That $40,000 allocation probably lasted us a month, um, depending on, you know, how many people used it and how many vouchers. This allocation, it's to be determined because we're not sure what those needs are going to be coming this summer with regards to housing, folks that need housing, um, or other items that might come up with regards to folks working in the shelters. So I don't have a good answer for you in that it's kind of, we left it a little open because we're not sure what we might need this summer and coming into the fall.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, Cheryl. And does your office or you administer that?
Yep. That actually, that's money that would be administered through our office. We'd either work through an agency, we'd put an application out, but it would be, it'd be, it'd be run through our department. Absolutely.
Okay. Good. Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Apologies for missing the, the light there. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Onto item two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item was pulled, I believe, by Alder Vanderleest.
That's correct. Uh, I, I'd just like a little information on the $595,446. Can we just have a little breakdown how that money's going to be spent and where did the money derive from?
Yeah, absolutely.
State money?
This is the federal cares allocation that's being distributed, um, through community development block grant funding, but I will turn things over to Director Bonk for the full description.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so just overall, the, the breakdown, um, of the funding. So this, uh, as the mayor said, is an allocation, um, that was part of the federal stimulus package. Um, money went out to entitlement communities, uh, that normally receive block grant and home funding, uh, throughout the country and in the state. Uh, and based on the formula that they use, uh, Green Bay was slated to receive, uh, just under $600,000. And as Mayor discussed, um, we've had a lot of discussions about, um, you know, how best to distribute these funds. And, and so the plan before you, um, broken down into a few different ways. Um, number one, um, is administration and we took 10% to allow, um, for staff to charge back time to COVID-related activities. Uh, right now through our normal block grant allocation, um, we do cover some staff time with that. Uh, this would be over and beyond that for additional staff that may participate in administering these activities. Uh, in essence, this would be a savings of levy dollars because, um, some employees who are on the levy may be able to charge back to this account. Um, generally in our normal block grant funding, which was in the, the following item, uh, you can do up to 20%. Um, we felt 10% was a fair amount because again, we want to get these dollars working in the community. Uh, another category is public service activities. Um, we had planned on allocating $120,000 to the business improvement districts, uh, split equally among the four bids, um, and they would be used to help offset the costs of modifying, uh, different events, um, you know, in order to, you know, take care of additional costs of, of spreading out, social distancing, um, different times, different methods, maybe offsetting costs of participation or registration. Um, you know, we really felt that it was important for us to continue to have events in the community. Um, these events bring people, um, you know, hopefully in a responsible way, but they bring them to our business districts, which, you know, there's secondary benefits, um, to the businesses that are there by having people nearby. Um, they also promote things like food distribution and then like our farmers markets and providing access to fresh food for our community, which is, is a very important thing when it comes to, you know, our block grant dollars. Uh, urgent need, then in terms of things, you know, more directly related to COVID-19, uh, as was previously mentioned, we have an additional allocation here of $80,000 towards homelessness assistance programs. Uh, as Assistant Director Renee Wake had talked about, we had been, uh, currently working with NUCAP. Um, this is again, to be determined, um, in, in terms of providing safe shelter for homeless individuals in our community, um, working to make sure that, you know, social distancing or they have access to, um, healthcare in, in case they need it and working with different providers to be able to provide that. A $100,000 to go back into the community development revolving loan program. Uh, this is a program, uh, the pandemic loan is really these short-term, um, loans, uh, $5,000, $10,000 for emergency relief. Uh, this $100,000 will go back into our larger, uh, revolving loan program, um, which really works on kind of bigger picture, larger projects. Um, those do require, uh, potentially job creation and, uh, creation of jobs for low to moderate income, income individuals. Um, $100,000 for essential frontline employee relief programs. Um, this would begin, uh, again, be working with some of the nonprofit providers in our community, um, who are already doing some of these things to support the programs that they are doing. Um, when you talk about direct assistance, um, that would be, um, we would work on an agreement with these agencies to find out, tracking the money where it would be going, whether it's to, you know, purchase food or provide shelter, um, really targeted to those who, you know, are, have the maximum exposure in our community. Uh, $136,000 to Green Bay Conservation Corps. Um, this would be the city providing some limited, uh, term jobs for unemployed residents. Um, for example, there's a number, and then Director Ditchite, um, could talk about, uh, there's a number of, of smaller parks projects, um, maybe a handful of public works projects that we could use. We've got materials and then, and they're ready to go, but just we don't have the staff time to do it. Um, so providing some opportunities, um, to get that work done and provide some meaningful employment to individuals in our community. So that is what is, has been proposed as the allocation. Um, as I talked about at the redevelopment authority, uh, I think what we have now are just, you know, some allocated buckets. Um, we need to provide this plan, uh, to HUD in order to receive our money. Uh, we do not have a, a timeframe exactly when that will be done. Um, but these are buckets in terms of where we hope to spend the program, uh, dollars. We are still also waiting for the Federal Register of Rules to be published to say just exactly how we can spend these funds. Uh, with that, we've been in, in very close contact with HUD and talking about these programs. All of them would qualify under normal block grant spending. So we don't see that would be any different with this cares money. Um, the cares money probably will have a lot more flexibility with it and, and a lot looser rules, I guess, if you will. Um, so we feel that all these will apply. Um, but as these come forward, this would be administered either through our department, um, Community and Economic Development with a combination of, if there's significant changes, um, going back to the redevelopment authority for specific allocations. And again, you know, some specific agreements between us and external partners, uh, and just how that money would be, be used.
Thank you. I got one quick question.
Sure.
Would we be able to put any of, any of the money into our contingency fund, which we use for numerous, numerous things? Uh, in other words, are we bound to spend the money exactly how, how it's been dictated or, or do we have flexibility?
So there is flexibility with, with how the money is spent. Um, really what they would like to, to do though, is see it go towards certain activities. Um, you know, you could say unallocated at this time. Um, generally the, the HUD likes to see money allocated towards certain projects. Um, there, there is flexibility with these funds that, um, if you don't spend them in the way that you anticipate, um, it's, it's easier to amend than traditional block grant dollars. I believe it only requires, um, a, a five-day comment period and an amendment process that would go back through the redevelopment authority, um, to shift some of those dollars. Um, it, it could potentially be possible to, to hold some of those in reserve. Um, I think part of the, um, I guess push with these dollars though, was to get them working in the community, um, sooner, sooner than later.
Okay. That answers my question then.
Sure.
Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do have a question. I was trying to Google what HUD has as their, their guidelines and they've kind of revised it a couple of times. So I didn't, didn't quite nail down what their final one was, but, um, Kevin or Cheryl, if you could answer, could we use a portion of this? Um, because COVID did affect our elections. Could some of this go towards, uh, the next elections, you know, making sneeze guards or cost of PPE, um, accessibility, things of that nature?
I believe so. I would have to pull up the rules. Again, the, the full rules haven't been finalized, but as long as things are, are COVID-related, um, if you give me a second, I could probably pull up some of the rules. Um, it could potentially be used to handle, um, additional expenses, though, um, it may count towards the administration cost because, um, you're basically, those dollars, um, are going towards the government itself. And so it would come up against, it would have to come out of that administration account, uh, in terms of, of how those dollars are spent because there's not dollars actually going to an individual, um, you know, at the end of the day. So it would potentially be possible, but it would count against that administration, uh, allocation or that allocate, that administrative part of these dollars.
Then that might be worthwhile looking into because it is, you know, public health and safety and we will probably have some increased costs, you know, making perhaps more sneeze guards, you know, all the PPE, you know, we've discussed this at our ad hoc committee, the additional equipment we might need for the, the workers. Um, the 120,000 for the bid programs, that seems like, uh, you know, that's 20%. That's a, a huge chunk of this, uh, amount. Uh, do we have a breakdown exactly of dollars or do we just kind of pick an amount we thought sounded good?
So, um, yeah, I think, again, you know, trying to balance how this money was spread out, um, we felt that the, the bid allocation, um, was larger in terms of a percentage. Um, but with that, we felt there were a lot of, um, secondary and tertiary effects with this money. I think one of the things that we looked at is, okay, from a, a dollar standpoint, if you take $120,000 divided amongst the four bids, that's $30,000 per bid. And then if you start to look at the number of events that these bids are having, um, you know, 10, 15, I mean, even just write, simplify it, um, and take 10 events that, you know, would need to be adjusted, you're looking at $3,000 per event, which is, um, really, I mean, small. And I, I think Alder Johnson could probably attest to the cost of events and then how much those are. Um, you know, it, it may not be much to move the needle in, in terms of any particular event, but it could potentially offset. Um, you know, as I kind of alluded to earlier, I think the, the additional effects of what these bids do, um, you know, they in turn, turn support a lot of our small businesses, um, that we may not be able to directly support or, uh, you know, may, uh, you know, have fallen through the cracks in terms of not being able to secure other funding. So by bringing people to these areas, um, and, and being able to be closer to these businesses, we thought was a good thing. Um, again, we had talked about potentially, um, you know, farmers markets and then the access to food in the community. Um, you know, we would still have to define the specific ways in, in which each of the bids or how each of the bids would spend their funds and really, um, you know, they'd be working and, and taking some direction from the bids themselves. You know, they best know how to, to reallocate these things. Uh, but we really felt based on the actual number of events that are happening, um, each event in itself doesn't add up to a lot, but when you conglomerate them together, it, it does add up to a pretty substantial sum.
All right. I, I appreciate that. And I, you know, I can see some of the merits of that. Um, I think they could probably, instead of 30,000 each, easily do with 25, you know, they could probably use 100,000 each, but. could probably use $100,000 each, but I'm going to make a motion that the public service activities be decreased, the $120,000 down to $100,000, with the extra $20,000 going to administration to be used for election-related activities in the upcoming August, November for COVID-related expenses.
I'll second that.
Ask a question?
Made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Dorf. We have a question from...
Yeah, Galvin.
Alder Galvin, go ahead.
Just a question, if we do vote on this, Alder Weary has made a motion for, what happens if we don't spend that money that's been allocated for the elections? How does it get redistributed?
Sure. So what we will do is, just like we did with the previous item before it, we would come and bring it back through redevelopment authority and council and say, look, it's been X amount of months, or one of these activities proposed HUD said was ineligible, so here's how we'd like to reallocate it. So I think, you know, there's enough flexibility in terms of timing in here that if we weren't able to spend all the money, there would be opportunities to reallocate it at a future date and actually do so in a pretty timely manner. So if money gets shifted, just like, again, the item before us, you know, we didn't spend all of our $20,000, so we look to reallocate them, we would do the same thing with these dollars here.
All right, thank you very much.
And I just want to make one last comment. I think it still stays true to what you're trying to do with the bids, but does address a need, and I think Alder Dorf can also comment at our ad hoc committee, which I think went quite well. There are going to be additional expenses the council will be seeing, I would think, and I think this would be prudent to use some of the federal money that really is meant for this, so thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Just for everyone's edification, there is a discussion on the WEC's agenda, the Wisconsin Elections Commission agenda, for tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM to discuss how to spend $7.3 million that Wisconsin received in CARES grant funding. So just wanted people to be aware of that, you know, if we do receive some support from that, $7.3 million might be appropriate to reevaluate some of the decisions made here tonight.
That makes sense, but just in case, you know, a lot of things, you see good plans go wrong, and I would rather have us be ready and return it than have nothing, so.
Yep.
Understood.
Mayor, this is Alder LaFave.
Alder LaFave, go ahead.
Yes, so then what I understand with the discussions that, say we vote on, excuse me, Alder Weary's motion, and then we find out we get money from the state for the elections, that we can just ship this money back? Is that my understanding?
Yes, we could, and what we would do is bring back an amended plan to approve based on the unused money.
Okay, and then I think you kind of said there is no time limit on this?
Again, the rules haven't been set yet for our normal block grant dollars. There's usually a timeliness component, that you have to spend X amount of dollars, you know, generally, a majority of the percentage within, you know, the year to 18 months. It has not been set out on this, but just some of the discussions we've had is that they would like to see this money used sooner than later, and then get working in the community.
Sure, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Alder Sawyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Alder Weary, for this. I think it's a good motion. I think, you know, I think this will help, and as we move forward, so I commend you for that. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mayor?
Motion made... Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I just need to state for the record that any mode is I'm employed by one of the business improvement districts.
I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit there with, are you abstaining?
Yeah, I need to abstain because of my employment by one of the business improvement districts, so not only for the amendment, but for the entire item.
Got it, understood. Motion has been made to amend, it's been seconded. If there's not further discussion, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? You guys have it? The item has been amended?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. There's not any further discussion. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? You guys have it? On to the report of the INS committee.
Motion to approve.
I think there was one more item, Mr. Mayor, number three?
Let's say we did one and two.
I had one and two.
Yeah.
I had said number three, sorry, I don't know if it didn't come through.
Oh, okay.
Never heard it.
No.
Motion to reconsider number three, since we passed it earlier.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made to reconsider, made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor of reconsideration signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? You guys have it? Item three under report of the redevelopment authorities now in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Director Vank, you sent me the last from five years ago, what our plan was moving forward, but unfortunately, I was looking at it on my phone, and I think it was 150 pages, so I couldn't find the summary of it. So if I'm wrong on something, just correct me, I tried to read it. As Alder Johnson said, we get these lengthy volumes to read. Under the goals for 2020 to 24, maintain support and enhance housing. I mean, it's HUD money, so that makes sense. Number five, was this a goal last time, to increase the number of homeless shelters? Is it really our goal to increase them? I could see maybe supporting, but a goal of increasing them seems, I don't know, a little strange. I couldn't find it if it was a goal five years ago.
Yes, I'm going to try and pull up, and I may actually pull in Assistant Director Renier Wig. That plan was done right before my time with the department.
Yeah, and I thank you for sending me that document, it was just, it's, you know, pretty valuable.
I'm not sure if that goal was in our plan five years ago. That goal came as a result, I think, of the public commentary we had for the preparation of this plan. So I think it was, that was worded in a way from all of the public comments, and that there was more need for homeless housing in Green Bay.
And then, kind of following up on that, the public services, is this, it's one through seven, you know, increase or support, is that a ranking of priority or just a list of things? Is it prioritized? Or is it just a list?
No, I'm sorry, I don't...
You know, mental health, abuse, neglected, transportation, childcare, youth and senior.
Believe that that is just a list.
Okay.
That's just a list. Nope, it's not in a rank order, and then I just did pull, just for quick reference, the previous plan, one section, I mean, I don't know if it talked about the number of homeless shelters specifically, but it did address homelessness and to kind of tie the ribbon, you know, the need for more permanent housing, and in terms of, I think, that was something five years ago. I think it's still an issue now, and based on some of the public input and some of the data that has been collected, you know, the homelessness population has grown, you know, both year-round and seasonally in the winter, and so that is why that has been addressed as a major need in the community.
I will make the motion to delete the, where's the number? Well, let's see here. To delete the words homeless shelters and/or, so it would be increase the number of transitional housing units. I'm not sold that we need to increase the number of homeless in the city. Maybe some of them need to be enhanced slightly, but I firmly believe the more you build, you know, more might come, so. That's my motion. It will read increase the number of transitional housing units.
Motion made to amend by Alder Weary. You have a second?
Everybody wants to build homeless shelters. Good for you.
Like, the motion is...
Your Honor, honestly, that comment is out of line.
I was waiting for your Andy.
Yeah, well, you're out of order with that kind of comment. That's not appropriate, that's beneath the dignity of the office.
Alders, both of you need to maintain some decorum here. The motion fails...
I've been quite fine, I don't think I've been shouting.
We are on the item itself.
Move to approve, or unless it has been already.
It was reconsidered, so we need to do it again. To approve the item?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Galvin. Any further discussion?
I'd like this recorded, please.
We will have a recorded vote.
Well, it's not, nothing's coming up here. I thought I had it. So this is, what did it state on the, okay, here it is, it just came up.
That motion, or that item passes 10 to 2. We are on to the report of the Improvement and Services Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second, Alder LaFave.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave to approve Report L, which is the report of the INS committee from the meeting on the 13th, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number two. Number five.
Items two and five will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? You guys have it? Report has been approved with the exception of items two and five. What are your wishes regarding item two?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Item was pulled by Alder Galvin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor, and actually, I'd like to withdraw this item. After a lot of consideration after the meeting and sitting on the Finance Committee, I have a little conclusion that sometimes we get caught up in the effort to try and do as much as we can for our constituents by reducing fees and fines and other items for them, because we're just trying to be nice to them, you know, we forgive taxes and things like that. And looking at our current situation, and not just this year, but the last two years and moving forward for probably the next several years, we are going to be in some real financial straits here, and I was kind of adding up in my head, just in the last, since January 1st of this year, how many times we've forgiven fees, we've reduced fees, we've forgiven fines, taxes, things like that, and how much that is going to cost all the taxpayers, and so I just, I, after a lot of reflection, I just don't feel right to pursue this at this time, and I'd like to withdraw it.
Galvin, is the motion here to receive and place on file?
Second.
If that's the motion.
Is that the appropriate motion?
Yes, thank you.
The Galvin makes a motion to receive and place on file, item two, that's been seconded by Alder Dorf. Additional discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Gerlach.
I would just like to thank Alder Galvin for taking a step to be very thoughtful about that and make the hard decision, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any others? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? You guys have it, the item has been received and placed on... Item five?
Motion to approve.
Made by Alder Dorf to approve the item. Item was pulled by Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. If Director Grenier, if Director Grenier, I guess, could provide a quick overview, I seem to remember having previously approved the change in citations, could you just provide a quick overview on what the purpose of this particular item is?
Director Grenier?
Absolutely. These citations are actually governed by Green Bay Municipal Code, they're written right into the ordinance, with some staffing changes over the last couple of years, both within Public Works and down in Law Department. Every time that the citation changes, used to come through committee, we had a long-term employee down there who used to monitor the agendas, and she would automatically make the appropriate changes to ordinance and bring the ordinances forward for adoption. We were unaware of that, and what happened is we now have the rates that have been approved by the council without the corresponding changes to the ordinance, so what we're asking for is to bring those ordinance changes forward, and then the actual ordinance change will be at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this, and because all of these changes are lumped together, I don't think we need to rehash the discussion on this, we've had that already, but one item in particular that I was fundamentally opposed to last time was the very hefty and significant increase for the parking violations related to item E, that was raised from $150 to $302, specifically that was for parking and handicap stalls. It's not to minimize the severity of that particular infraction, but to me, that type of penalty just seemed very heavy and very excessive, so I'd ask for a roll call vote so that I can document my no on that.
Very good.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alder Galvin?
Thank you. This is a question for Director Grenier. These fines that are assessed, and being the recipient of a couple last year and over the years, and a couple instances where I didn't take care of it right away, it is, it is pretty stiff. I mean, they start out at basically what would amount to about two hours' worth of wages for an average person, even more for some, and if you don't take care of it right away, which again is your responsibility, and it's my responsibility that I didn't take care of the meter at the time, but these fines, what do they go to finance? They go to the Parking Division, this is our operating budget.
So this is what we pay wages from, this is what we use to maintain our parking ramps, and eventually, do we bank any of this money to replace them, or is it just for your yearly operations?
Well, parking, because parking is a wholly, or a fully funded operation, this also goes into, any revenue that would be in excess of expenses would go into a capital account. That's not happened recently, especially over the last several years, as parking has become completely self-sufficient. Up until, well, starting with 2020, we've taken over the debt service on the parking ramp repairs, and starting three or four years ago, we assumed the remaining debt left on the Cherry Street ramp, whereas those had been levy-supported in the past, so we've not been making contributions into our capital account, we have barely been covering our expenses, but if there are revenues that exceed expenses that would go into a capital account, which would be set aside for future parking needs, more than likely going towards a new ramp when a new ramp is needed.
Okay, and the shelf life of a ramp is, if I remember correctly, about 75 years or so?
Between 50 and 75.
And we have, I believe, two ramps right now?
We have three municipally-owned ramps, we have the Main Street ramp, the Pine Street ramp, and the Cherry Street ramp, and then we also manage the River ramp on behalf of the ownership group down there at the former Watermark Building.
Okay, and what is the age of those two ramps that we are responsible for replacing?
Again, three ramps that we own.
I'm sorry.
Offhand, I don't know, Cherry is the most recent, I believe Cherry was built in 2002 to 2004, something like that. Main is starting to near the end of her life, and as part, I do want to remind the council that as part of the development agreement that was structured between ourselves and Shriver Foods Incorporated, at the absolute latest, I believe it's 2031, the Main Street ramp has to go away. That had, the day we signed that agreement back in 2011, there was a 20-year clock... the Main Street ramp has to go away. That had, the day we signed that agreement back in 2011, there was a 20-year clock ticking on that ramp.
Okay. And then the, the parking lot that we purchased on Monroe Street, how was that funded?
That was funded from the, the corner of Main and Monroe? Or, I'm sorry. Yeah, Main and Monroe.
Is it Main and Monroe, or the old, um...
The old body shop.
No, actually, I was talking about the, the parking lot, the large one that the county was going to purchase.
That, that you would have to ask Director Vonck.
Okay, so that's not covered by deep, by parking utility?
No, sir.
Okay. So if we were to reduce or keep the fines where they're at, and as costs continue to rise, we're going to have to start taking some of the burden then for parking utility and put that on the levy?
That, that's going to be up to the, up to the council.
And in roughly nine years, we've got to build a new ramp?
Well, uh...
I mean, if we have to take down the Main Street ramp, you know, as to our contract? Is that right? If I, my, did I understand you right? In roughly nine years, we've got to start looking at a new ramp there? Take that one down and build a new one?
You did. One of the items that we had proposed originally for 2020 that I've removed from the 2020 program was to update the parking study that was completed a couple of years ago. That parking study did not anticipate a lot of the development and redevelopment that occurred within the downtown area, and we do need to capture what the impacts of that, that redevelopment is having on our parking system. But at that time, they, we were predicting that by about now, we were going to start seeing a deficit in the amount of available parking, which was going to push the need for another parking structure, even having the Main Street ramp still in operation. So for 2021, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to fund that study and get some updated numbers because we may be in need of a ramp earlier than, than even nine years from now.
Okay. And any money that we could set aside in the meantime would offset any bonding for the
That is correct.
Okay. So as we take the long, bold view, which is what I've been asking our, our council to be doing every year, that's why we've gone into a five-year budgeting plan, five-year plan for bonding, we have to start thinking that anything we short parking utility on now is going to have to be placed on the back of the taxpayers through the levy. And we have the constant argument about our taxes are too high. I hear a lot on social media about people complaining about their parking tickets, but it's a balancing act. So are we willing to restrict the ability for parking utility to raise funds to operate? And possibly, hopefully, it would be nice if they could start setting some aside for the future, but put it on the backs of the taxpayers as a levy thing, or even as a bonding, which also affects. And, and so I think we need to give careful consideration when we start making decisions like we're being asked to make right here. It's not so simple as we're being mean to people that violate the parking ordinances. I think it's something that we need to think about. I mean, we've got a tough year. If you've been looking at the, at the Finance Meeting, we've got a tough year coming up when it comes to bonding. We're going to have, I'm sure, a tough year when it comes up to the, the budget. And so every little bit, like I said before on that last item that I asked to withdraw, every little bit affects it. And even though it may look like just a small amount, it adds up. And so I, I, as much as I hate paying those tickets, I guess if I'm staying on top of things, then I don't have to pay them. And I'm not in favor of Alder Johnson's proposal. Thank you.
Alder, further discussion? The Vanilles, go ahead.
I might want to just add that the parking utility is going to be quite short. If you look at the last three-month period or two-month period with the amount of parking that's been taking place downtown, I think we're going to have quite a large reduction in revenue as far as parking in the City of Green Bay and downtown City of Green Bay. I don't know the exact figures, but I'm sure that Director Grenier is aware of that, that we're going to be pretty short on the, on the parking funds in 2020 here. So that's just my comment there. Thank you.
Alder. Any additional comments?
Mayor, one more time.
Alder Johnson, for a second.
Thank you. I just want to be clear here. And Alder Galvin, I appreciate the questions you were asking, and I, I had many of the same questions in Improvement in Services when we've talked about long-term parking management strategies, and that's not what this is for me. This, this is, this is about a modification to an ordinance about the rates on parking citations. The one in particular I'm most concerned about, that I opposed last time, and I want to remain consistent, imagine walking out to your car and finding a $302 parking citation. $302 parking citation. That's where my opposition is. I agree that we still need to have a long-term parking management strategy in terms of how we finance those things. I don't think that this ordinance is the place to do that. And, and that is, but it is absolutely a conversation we need to have, and I'm sure we're going to have in the coming years. But again, I just wanted to be very clear. I'm not looking to continue to cut what's happening here. And in fact, I mean, when you talk about why, why parking, why parking enforcement exists at all, it's to achieve compliance. It's not, it's not intended to drive revenue. Revenue is the side effect of what happens when people don't comply with the law. And so I would just urge the council to be very cautious about how we view parking enforcement. That's another dialogue that can come down the road. But again, but at the end of the day, just want to be very clear, my opposition is because of that one citation increase. Thank you, Mayor.
So, and did you request a recorded vote?
Yes.
Okay. Alder Gerlach.
I just would like to point out that all of these other fees that are being raised, if I read this correctly, are for parking and not attending to your meter in time. Whereas if I park in a handicap spot, that is my choice right up front. I know I'm parking in a handicap spot. It's clearly marked. What can I expect? But if I put money in a meter and I stay too long somewhere, and I come out and, and, you know, the meter has run out, you know, that's a little different. But that wasn't a choice I made to park in the wrong place.
Further discussion, we'll go to the recorded vote.
Mayor, I just want, one quick question for Alder Johnson? One quick question for Alder Johnson? Can you hear me? Alder Johnson?
It, I, yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's a...
Why don't you make, why don't you make an amendment to, to have that $302 fee cut in half?
Just, just for context, Alders, we did have this discussion. Obviously, we have a new member. So, you know, we can certainly have it again, but this is a debate that, that already occurred.
Okay, Mayor.
I just wanted to know why Alder Johnson wouldn't want to ask to have the fee cut in half? We could vote on it. If it's not dictated by the State of Wisconsin, why don't we try to cut that fee in half? Can you hear me, Alder Johnson?
Thank, thank you, Alder, for that.
I think I can hear you. I'm respecting the mayor's authority, and I, I think it's out of order to ask other Alders questions.
Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't know if we handled this in January, perhaps, but it was several months ago. And I think this is just catching up to, to post it. I don't know if we'd have to revisit it at committee to change it. I was in favor of the change because when we looked at the surrounding communities and around the state, we were woefully below what other communities did. And so it really brought us up in line. And if you look at all the different parking transgressions, this is probably the most egregious. So we should definitely at least be in line with what other communities do. And that's what, that was the thinking of the council at the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder.
Mayor, this is Alder LaFave. Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Alder.
Yes. Going back to the, the citation for parking in a handicap, I don't believe this should, that this should be cut at all. This is something that somebody, as Alder Gerlach mentioned, made a conscious decision to park in a spot that's duly noted that it's handicap. I think that is irresponsible of someone to do that. This takes away mobility from someone who really needs that parking spot. I think this fine is fine. If you lower it, most people, so some people, $150 is going to mean nothing. You have to make it large enough so that when someone gets that fine, they're duly noted. They're not going to do it again. So I would definitely not, in, in favor of bringing it down. I will vote for this. I think this is fine, what we're setting these fines. And most of these, I had asked, Chris Pirlo had sent me the definitions, what A, B, C, and D, what they stand for. And all of them, no parking. There's a big sign that says no parking. No stopping or standing. There's big signs that says not to do this. When you, then you, if you willingly do it, you're saying, I don't care. So I think we have to set examples. So I'm going to vote for the whole, the whole number five. Thank you.
You, Alder. Without further discussion?
Oh, Mayor.
Alder Sawyer?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I was looking through this quite extensively as well, and I had hoped that we could maybe put on the ordinance the various violations that there are, but I found out there's 33 of them. So that, I think that would be a little cumbersome. But I concur with Alder Gerlach and Alder LaFave as well on that. I, I think that's a conscious effort on someone's part to park there. And, yeah. Oh, I'm done. Thank you.
Being no other speakers, we will go to the vote.
I have my lights on.
Okay. Brunette?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to point out, as I mentioned at committee, this is only coming to us at this point just because of a clerical error. I don't want to classify it necessarily as an error. It was a city employee who worked under Director Grenier's department. It was, and then, you know, submitted an ordinance shortly after the council passes it or around the same time. One thing I want to keep in mind, I want the council to keep in mind is even if someone gets a $300 citation, or any citation for that matter, they can still contest it. So if they parked in a handicap and it was sincere error, they can go through the proper channels to contest that ticket. So I'm in favor of adopting the ordinance change as is, without any changes to the $300. Thank you.
All right, now we're really going to go to the vote. Board? That item is adopted 11-1. On to Protection Policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve Report M, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee from the meeting on May 11, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number 20.
21.
Any others? Items 20 and 21 will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items 20 and 21. Your wishes regarding item 20?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. The item was pulled by the Alder Dorf.
Thank you, Your Honor. The reason I pulled it is that asking staff to develop rules necessary on the request and asking them to do all of that work when we haven't even talked about it as a council, I, I just, I thought it was putting staff to possibly necessary work. We don't, we never discussed as a council if we wanted to have this, allowing the public to address City Council on non-agenda items at each full Common Council meeting. And, you know, we already know some of the rules are, you can't respond if it's not an agenda item. We, we know we're not allowed to address it because it hasn't been posted as an agenda item. So I would just like to to receive, put, change that to receive and place on file, unless we want to have a discussion, you know, about whether or not we want to have this kind of action at
A motion has been made to receive and place on file. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
The second was made by Alder Galvin. Further discussion? Alder Brunette?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. I'm against the receive and place on file. I did speak with Alder Dorf on this. So I kind of understand where she's coming from. We don't want to have staff spend time pursuing something if, as a council, we still haven't given the stamp of approval to the concept. I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great idea. There was a gentleman who approached me. He mentioned that this, has the city ever looked into that? I honestly didn't know. When I was on the Brown County Board, we did it. We allowed the public to address the full county board on non-agenda items. And I always look forward to that part of the, the meeting because you hear directly from the public on issues that aren't necessarily an agenda item. So they come to you with all different sorts of issues, opinions, ideas, weaknesses we have as a city, or areas where we can turn more attention. As much as we think that city government is accessible to the people, we know darn well by talking to our constituents that governments, not just the City of Green Bay, but governments in general, a lot of times, people don't know how to properly address or find an entryway into their government to address their grievances, to give ideas, to correspond with their Alders. Much as we think we know quite a bit and we're well-connected to the community, I would say a great number of people in our community probably don't know what a city alderman is. And I, I, I don't say that lightly. In the same way, I don't think people quite understand what a state legislator necessarily does, or school board. We see it all the time. There are different levels of civic engagement. What I like to do is allow people from every corner of the city to address their council on any issue that they deem appropriate. So obviously, we're not necessarily approving the overall policy. We're just, at this point, asking staff to look into it. City Attorney's Office mentioned that other municipalities have done this. I think, you know, if we set a timeline limit saying, don't spend any more than four or five hours of staff time looking into it, I think that would perhaps be more appropriate. It is a good idea. I, I see absolutely no harm in it. There are a couple other thoughts that I wanted to share, and I'm not thinking of them at the moment, but I don't think we should ever, you know, not allow this. The public should be able to address this at their, at their meeting in the building that they own, which is City Hall. So with that, I'd like to, if I could, Mayor, if I think about what it is I wanted to say, I ask, just allow me to speak to a later point if the discussion goes there. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Alder LaFave.
Just, just one second, Alder LaFave. Press your button, and, and we will get to you, Alder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also agree. This is an excellent idea. I think it is law overdue. You do see many communities do this, and it does increase accessibility for citizens. I, I don't know who or why we'd be opposed. I welcome comments, and it doesn't waste my time. So I don't see how people would do that for anyone. I think at least get it to staff, get it to committee where we can flesh it out, and then we can have a more in-depth discussion at committee. So I'm, I'm opposed to receiving and placing on file. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also opposed to receiving and placing on file. I used to live in a community where this was allowed, and it was a fantastic channel for the citizens to be able to address not only the mayor, but the balance of council on a variety of issues. And, and some of them weren't always bad. A lot of them were just ideas that people had. And certainly, you can have those conversations one-on-one with individuals, but it doesn't have the same impact as when you're able to, to have an opportunity to, to address your elected body. I, I'm generally hesitant... as when you're able to have an opportunity to address your elected body. I'm generally hesitant, you know, to to restrict the citizen's right to to address a government body that is elected to represent them. And I, you know, when I look at this, and I understand the need to protect staff's time, but on a on something like this, which is not the decision, do we allow it or not allow it, but do we allow the staff to spend time on it? And I don't see something like this consuming a lot of staff time. I mean, when you look around the policies designed, I mean, like you're going to set a time limit, and that's basically it. I'm not sure why staff would even need to spend four or five hours worth of time, as Aldo Brunette alluded to, other than maybe to see what other communities are doing. But perhaps that's a piece of the workload that maybe even Aldo Brunette or anyone else would be willing to carry if, you know, reaching out to a few other communities to see what their policies look like. But this seems like a very, a very easy thing for staff to work on, but a very important thing to provide the citizens of our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Vanderlist.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't support receiving the placing on file. I think I always like to hear from our taxpayers. And I think the input that we get on the from the county, a lot of good ideas are exchanged. So I support the citizens be able to come up and speak in front of our city council. I think it'd be very, a very good tool for the community, and I thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin.
Thank you, your honor. I'm not in favor of this. I have a lot of contact with my constituents. I've had five already this week that have never talked to me before in the entire time I've been a representative. They come to me with their thoughts, their ideas and things like that. I'm able to help them out, correct them. Sometimes I put them on, I tell them what they have should be handled by a committee or by the council. They have an op at the committee level to make those good suggestions and ideas or controversial or whatever they might be. But there's a proper way to do this. I think, you know, it's a feel-good thing to let them just get up and randomly speak at council meetings. But I think it's maybe not a good use of everyone's time, including theirs, to make them sit at a council meeting that runs for five hours till the end of the meeting. And how many of them are going to be disappointed with the process if that's what ends up happening? Or how many would be better served if we can either take care of their problem by directing them to the right department or get them the right help they need, or send them to the right committee where whatever they have to say can be dealt with properly and in the proper form? And if they end up going to the council because we always offer them the opportunity, if they don't like what happens, or they still want to get up and speak about whatever they have going, they have that opportunity at council in the right format, set up at the right time. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Lefave.
Yes, being on the county board, we do have this at the beginning of our meetings. What happens is that people come up and speak, and sometimes a supervisor will realize there's something very important that was brought up, and then they will put it in a late communication that evening for that item to be discussed. So I think this is a good idea. But now with our new, we're not meeting in person anymore, we are not doing the, we're not doing this. We're doing it differently. We, from the Wisconsin County Association, they recommended that we do not do it because it takes up too much time when you're on these programs for our meetings. So instead, we decided that people will can email into the county office, and then they send those emails to us that we can read those, and we get that comment that way. There might be a way that we can do this. It's something to think about. But I think we should not place it on filement. I think we should maybe discuss this more. Maybe it should go back to a committee. I think this is something that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Alder. Alder Steyer.
Thank you, your honor. You know, I think initially I was against this, but as time has gone on, I've listened to some of the county folks talk about this and how it's helped them at their meetings. You know, Alder Galvin does mention that, you know, we deal with many, many such people get a hold of us. But I think I don't see the harm in it in the sense that it gives a citizen another chance to feel like a buy-in into their community. And a court that are on council, they stated that it's not all that lengthy, you know, maybe one or once or twice it might be. But I don't feel I feel that it's a good thing. So I will, I don't want to receive it in place on file. Thank you.
Alder Scannell.
Well, just going to add, would Alder Dorf reconsider her motion to send it back to committee? She's waving her hand.
Alder Dorf.
As soon as I get a chance to say something, I will. So when the mayor calls on me and I can say what I'd like to say first, that is exactly what I was thinking of doing, but I'll wait for the mayor to call on me.
I concede the floor. And all I wanted to know is if she would reconsider.
Alder. Alder Dorf.
Thank you. So I think, you know, I believe that we have many, many ways for the public to dress us. The public can address individual elders via email, or, as often happens, they can address all of us via email. And we get all of us get the emails that the that someone might choose to send to all of us and include the mayor. We have the processes of going and maybe talking with the constituent, maybe bringing the constituent back in the day, before coronavirus into City Hall and talking with a director. But we can do that. We can facilitate that so that they can perhaps have a problem or concern solved right there with the director of a department. They can they certainly can call us and so that we can, if things can't get resolved with the director, that we could suggest putting it onto a committee agenda where we have a process to talk and work through it at committee. And then everything that we do at committee automatically comes to council because the agendas come right over to council. So then there's that opportunity to have agenda items to be spoken to by a member of the public. So I see lots of harm in it. I've seen this happen at meetings, particularly school board meetings, where people can make any statement they want to make, and you cannot respond. You may not respond. And the public just left with whatever has been said, and they they can't hear any sort of rebuttal if a rebuttal is needed, or even an agreement, if an agreement is needed. So I'm very much against this, but I will change my motion and ask that this would go back to the Protection and Policy Committee for them to discuss further.
Second.
Second.
She withdraws her motion to receive in place on file, makes a motion refer back. It's been seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Brunette.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alder Dorf. I'm in favor of the motion. We can discuss this again at committee, and perhaps after the discussion at the committee level, I'd be willing to make a more targeted motion that identifies some of the some of the guidelines that such a policy would cover. So thank you, Alder Dorf. I'm in favor of the motion.
Alder. Alder Steyer for a second time.
I think one thing I wanted to clarify, and Alder Dorf has said that there are many ways to contact your alder, and I agree, there are. But you I am I'm surprised by how many folks don't have email. I mean, I have to make phone calls or I have to go and visit. There are quite a few people that don't have that access. So you have to really go out of your way to try to meet with those folks. So, you know, we spoke about this quite at length at at our meeting. And, you know, I'm not, you know, listening to what Aldo Brunette said, you know, maybe we can tighten it up a little bit. So I think for that reason, I would go for that. I kind of thought we talked about what we needed to talk about at the meeting, and I thought that we had came up with a good solution to have staff look at it. But I will defer, and I will I will I will follow that, and I will I'll accept that as well. Thank you.
Alder. Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm opposed to referring it back. I think our committee talked about it, and the only time we should see it again is after staff has regrouped and brought us more information. It's interesting, and I'll politely remind some on the council, many times alders ask staff to create a resolution, tweak an ordinance, create an ordinance, do some fact-finding, and then bring it to committee. So a lot of time, those requests are going on behind the scenes. We're asking staff to do things without the okay of the committee or the council. So if you're sending this back as a way of saying we don't even want information, then we should not be doing any kind of that backdoor requests for information or work unless the full council agrees on it. That's what's happening here. So let's send this on to staff. Otherwise, you know, Jesse, Aldo Burnett, President Burnett, to his credit, put it on committee. He just kind of went to staff and said, hey, can you kind of flesh out an ordinance or resolution and then bring it to committee? You could have done that, too. I've seen it done many, 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 many times over the years. So that's why I find this a little interesting. They're trying to cut it off before we even get the information. So I would say vote no to referring it back. Let's send it to staff to get more information. Pretty it just won't take long for them to do. Otherwise, we're going to have a discussion without information. And that's not too bad.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach.
Just a question, please. I don't understand what it is we're asking, what the information is we want from staff. What are we asking staff to give us? I don't understand.
Just, yeah, I can speak real quickly. I don't want to mischaracterize what others are hoping for. But generally speaking, I think what the request is, is to do some research with other municipalities or other governmental entities that have sort of this open comment period within their meetings and to report back on how that's structured.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing. This has been after Chavez. One more thing to add to that. There are a number of requirements that under the First Amendment and the public forum requirement. And so because we are creating a limited public forum, we want to make sure that whatever you guys ultimately do enact is going to be in compliance with those standards and that the rules that we're adopting are going to be the ones that are going to provide the most protection to the to the council while also accomplishing your goals of hearing from people.
Your attorney Chavez. We do have a motion to refer back to committee. It's been seconded. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 No.
The ayes have it. The item has been referred back to committee. Onto item twenty-one. The item or what are your wishes here?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. The item was pulled by Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to amend to state approve the request.
A second.
And then, under discussion.
You have comments, Alder Weary?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the request is to obtain bids or quotes from consultants for an external election review of processes and administration of the April 7, 2020 election. Preference should be given to attorneys with election law experience, current or former municipal clerks, or inspector general positions. Now, I've heard in a couple of different committees now, and when this was discussed, comments like, well, we created an ad hoc committee. They're doing that. And I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alder Dorf, but that's not really the task of that committee. It's really more of a forward-looking committee about planning for the next two elections. We would need a lot more time and effort to look back and look at that election. Right now, there's plenty to do with just looking forward at the next two elections. So that committee is not tasked with that. If it is, it's news to me, and we really need more resource because then if that's the case. So I think it's a simple request. Give some bids and quotes. If you think it's a surprise, we can go from there. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Dorf.
I don't think it's necessary. I think we already talked through this, and this is just another way of going around what we decided at the last city council meeting. I don't believe that we need an external election review, and I think that the council made its wish. It's just pretty well-known at the last council meeting about this. So I would definitely be voting against this amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin.
Thank you, your honor. It is a question maybe directed to Attorney Chavez. How many kicks at the cat do we get to take when we put something forth to council that gets rejected? If I believe I am remembering correctly, this is probably, I think, the third time there's been an attempt to request a review of the election process. I'm just wondering how many more times we can look for loopholes or ways of wrangling this or wording it so that we can make more attempts at having a review, report, investigation, however you want to term it, of the election that took place.
So the first is that it depends on how we designate the session of the council. If we designate a session of the council, and I know we've discussed this before for reconsideration, this is what we came up with, so I will have to go back and look it up for you again. One is whether or not the session is considered each individual meeting, meaning that you can't come up with the same idea during just that meeting. The other would be whether we consider the session of the council as the entire term of the council, in which case, once and I'm excited during the term, it wouldn't be something you could bring back just like that. So I would have to go back and revisit what the research indicated. Or alternatively, the council could just designate by ordinance what it feels is an appropriate designation of what what a session is. So that said, with the ways these requests have been worded, they are not technically asking for the same thing. They're asking for the same thing in spirit, but the wording of it is asking for something slightly different. The first one was for an investigation by the W E C. The second one is for an investigation by somebody other than the W E C. So while it is very close to being basically the exact same communication, it's really just up to the council on how you guys want to tackle it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Aldo Lefave.
Yes, I'm not in favor of this change of this number twenty-one. Excuse me. I'm really worried about spending more money. That's the problem. We have to move forward. We know what happened. We know that there are things that we're not going to do again. I think every one of us is going to be working to make sure that we do not have a repeat of what happened. I think we know some of the problems, and we will work on it. But I, right now, our budgets are so tight, and who knows what our what's going to happen with this virus if continues. We're going to have trouble with our taxes. People are collecting taxes. People might be going out of business. I don't I don't want to spend any more money on this. Thank you.
Alder. Alder Weary for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is only the second time I've heard it forward, so I'm not sure where certain alders coming from on it. The last one was really only to the Wisconsin Election Commission. That was our scope. That's all we could do is talk about that. So seems clear to me, at least, that this one is not that. It's asking for outside investigation. So, you know, I'm not sure. I heard someone's comments at the committee, you know, saying you don't know if there's other motives to this. Some older person said that. Notive is to get answers because I feel, as do many in the community, and probably some on this council who will see how they vote, there really were no real questions asked, no real answers given, no written report. So it's sad that that might be enough for some of you, but this is my last request coming in, and it's only my second. So we'll see where the vote goes, and this would be recorded, please, Mr. Mayor.
Request has been made for a recorded vote. Any further discussion? Alder Gerlach.
Excuse me for asking all these questions, but I have to start with understanding the past. So we have established an ad hoc committee to study the next two elections and make sure they go better than the last one. Has this ever happened? Or has the has the common council ever before established an ad hoc committee to ensure that the next election goes well in anyone's memory?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
I think anyone recollects that, Alder?
Okay, so then my point is that if you've established this ad hoc committee to look at how the next elections will go, it must be a reflection.
elections will go, it must be a reflection of the troubles we had with the April election. Had we not had any troubles, we would not have this ad hoc committee. So it seems to me that the ad hoc committee is tasked with building on what happened and learning from it so that it doesn't happen again. And again, we don't know how the pandemic will affect us in August and in November. So what I want to know, and I guess this would be directed to Alder Weary, is then, if we're already looking at the past and the problems to ensure it doesn't happen again, what is the purpose of paying someone to actually do, I'm trying to see the words here, to do an external election review? What is the goal?
So this is the third instance of Alders asking fellow Alders questions?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just curious if Attorney Chavez could weigh in and explain what's appropriate in the context of a council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yep, I'm talking, Mr. Mayor. All the time.
So the all questions need to be directed to the chair. And so while it is not to ask for additional information from an Alder, from another person, the question should be placed through the chair, then the chair will determine whether or not that, who should be provided that information, or if you should be providing that information.
Very good. Thanks, attorney. So given that Alder Weary, your name was invoked, would you care to respond?
Certainly, thank you. Well, a simple comment is we don't know what we don't know, right? And that's why you would get someone to look into it and give us actual answers written out on a piece of paper that we can refer to, and not a verbal report on maybe some handpicked pieces of information. So truly to get that outside look, and excuse my dog, it's back on here. Apparently, someone's invading my house.
Thank you.
It gets a consideration at the door.
Alder Gerlach, you still have the floor?
Oh, that's fine. I tried to determine what the purpose would be for doing both. So I guess that's the closest I'm going to come to understanding it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Motion to vote.
So we have a motion to approve the item. It's been seconded. There was a request for a recorded vote. Again, the motion is to approve the request by Alder Weary to the Protection and Policy Committee.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can you, is it, is it to do what we've even placed on file, or?
The motion is to approve Alder Weary's request.
Okay.
To obtain a bid. And we are on to Report of the Plan Commission.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, it flashed very quickly on the screen, who were the yeses?
Deputy Clerk.
All right, I appreciate it.
To Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes, Alder Johnson.
And please do correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was an amendment to the actual agenda item. So do we actually have to take action on the, on the item as it's published?
I'm, that's a question for Attorney Chavez. I thought it was just a motion to approve, but Attorney Chavez?
You'll have to remind me what the motion was.
So as is stated on the agenda, it is to receive and place on file. The motion was made to approve the request instead by Alder Weary.
The approval was denied essentially, so it has the effect of receiving place on file.
I would, I would just challenge on that. In the past, it's always been if you amend something, you vote on the amendment. If that fails, it goes back to the original motion. It's always been that way.
We do have a-
Now we have the original motion, which could be changed in any different way. Could be referred back, could be.
Well, we-
So I'm asking that we do vote on this motion.
Appreciate that, Alder. We do have the ruling by our attorney. You're free to challenge that.
I'm challenging her to look, because I think it's wrong. There's two different, this one was defeated, we're back to this one. You can do whatever you want with this one. You can refer it, you can amend it.
So I'm not disagreeing with your, what you're saying. What I'm, what I ask is what the motion was. If the motion was to just approve, then it failed. If the motion was to amend, then you are correct.
Yeah, okay. Maybe, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't understand.
Approved.
Yeah, the amendment was killed. Yeah, so we're back here.
No, no, I'm saying it's like what was done was a motion to approve. Now, if that's not the case, then I think there-
No, it was amendment. It was a motion to amend it. That failed.
No.
So it's not amended.
Other than sort of approve.
Not amended, back to the original motion.
Just a point of information, Mayor. I don't recall, and I don't think that it's recorded, that there was ever an initial motion to do what was on the agenda, which would then mean that Alder Weary's motion was not actually an amendment, but would have been the only motion that was made. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, but I think that's how it stand out. But I do agree Alder-
I waited for a motion.
Yeah, I do agree that normally you do have a motion and amendment, but I just don't think it happened that way, for what it's worth.
I think we should look at the minutes. I didn't just amend it. I waited till somebody said approve and second.
Okay.
My recollection was that a motion took place to approve, and it was seconded by Alder Burnett.
And then I amended it.
That's not how I recollect things happening. You know, the effect is the same. I'm not sure exactly what the debate is about.
We should get a chance to talk about receiving and placing it on file. That's the correct way to do this. Because I would not have made a motion to receive and place it on file.
Right.
Is there a way to check the minutes?
You made the motion to approve. Clerk, what do you have for the record here?
She's muted.
Clerk Teskey, you're muted, it sounds like.
Sorry about that. So I have our Alder Weary, poll 21. Alder Scannell and Alder Stevens got it on the floor. Alder Weary and Alder Burnett amended to say approved, and it failed.
So we're back to Scannell's motion.
Okay, so you do have it stated that was an amendment. So the motion before us is to receive and place on file, then? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think it's wrong to receive this and place it on file, as I've stated before with the one amendment. I think it's a, I think it's a gross injustice to the people who were wrong in this election. They deserve some solid answers to what went wrong. They really do. So think twice about this, but I'm opposed, and I'm asking for a roll call vote on this as well. I'm opposed to receiving and placing it on file. That's a gross injustice. Couch it however you want. It's bad.
Thanks, Alder. Go to the recorded vote. I will be breaking the tie again, in favor of receiving and placing on file. We are on to Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens to approve the vote, and which is the report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on May 11th, 2020. Any items to be handled separately?
Mayor, if I could be recorded as abstaining on item number four.
Number three, Your Honor.
Your abstention is noted, Alder. Alder Galvin, item three separately. Any others? There are none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. You guys have it. The report has been approved, the exception item three. Your wishes?
To approve.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alder LaFave to approve. The item was pulled by Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a few questions. Just want to make sure, as I'm reading through this, what we're doing is we're taking this facility, it's a 46-bed facility, and we're saying that in any time an emergency is declared by federal, state, or local government that directly impacts the city of Green Bay, if necessary, we would allow this facility to take on an extra 54 male residents. These residents would have to follow the rules that are all currently in place, which means they have to pay rent if they can. They have to either be working full-time or actively seeking employment. Excuse me?
I think that was just some feedback, Alder.
Okay. They're subject to breathalyzer tests on a daily basis. They have to make themselves available to the counseling procedures that take place at this facility. I guess part of what I'm wondering is that when, if we do approve this, a state of emergency is declared, say in the future, let's forget about what's happening right now, when that state of emergency ends, on the day it ends, does that mean 54 individuals potentially that could be there, they have to leave? And if so, where do they go?
With that question, we can go to Director Von. We do have a member of the public here, though, as well, so just for you to keep that in mind. Director Von.
Thank you. So to the first point of Alder Galvin's discussion, this does not amend anything else in the conditional use permit, which the original one, I believe, had an operating plan in that talked about all the protocols and in terms of rules, regulations for being a guest at the shelter. This changes none of that, and we are not dictating how they, you know, screen guests. I mean, so all those protocols are still going to be in place, which I believe was very important to the neighbors when this was discussed and making sure that, you know, this is a very well-run facility. What this does, to your point, yes, is it allows, under a state of emergency, to increase the capacity from 46 up to 100, only for the duration of that state of emergency. When that state of emergency is ended, the property will be required to go back to the 46 individuals. And in that case, many of these individuals, you know, have been, I mean, they're homeless, so they have been in the streets, parks, or, you know, finding other accommodations where they can. They would not, no longer be allowed to be at that facility. I believe there are, as the mayor mentioned, representatives from the property available to maybe answer more specific questions. But that is in terms of what this would permit, would permit a temporary increase in occupancy for the duration of emergency. And in this case, you know, the reason for the emergency is to have a shelter in place and to provide a place for homeless individuals to go in order to, you know, reduce interaction with others, and that was the intent of this amendment here, to allow those individuals to have a place to be, to be able to shelter.
All right. And I appreciate that answer, and I'm in favor of this. I just have some more questions. I think the Pastor Rico and his staff have done an outstanding job of running that facility. I think they've been able to appease all the neighbors, for the most part, with how they've run it. So I approve of this, but I just have a few more questions, and this might be more for Director Von, maybe not. This, if I understand correctly, was Brown County government through NUCAP, who they contract with, that approached Pastor Rico to see if he would be able to handle these people. Would they be responsible, then, for these individuals, when the state of emergency is done, to see that they get placed elsewhere? Or do they just open the doors and it's, and couple that can no longer stay there to find shelter?
I think in terms of the services that NUCAP provides, you know, working with the county right now, they were working to find, you know, temporary shelter. I think there are larger issues when we are dealing with the homeless population in our community, that if, you know, these individuals would no longer be allowed to be sheltered here, you know, they continue to work on alternative, more longer-term shelters. We also have talked about, and then this, you know, without getting too far off tangent, you know, and in terms of transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, I mean, those are all things that are needed in the community. That's going to take more than a city effort to come up with these things. You know, the best-case scenario is that we get to a point, you know, where we get to functional zero, and we don't need to have these shelters or these, you know, emergency needs, because people already have, have shelter. And so in terms of, you know, the long-term future or shelter for these individuals, that's still a community effort, which, you know, the county has played a role in, the city has played a role in. There's a Housing and Homelessness Coalition. I believe the mayor has been working with the Community Foundation, a homelessness study, to really kind of look at what can be done from a community perspective, with everyone pitching in to really solve the homelessness issue. So, I mean, it goes beyond this emergency thing, and then that's, you know, I don't have an answer for you today, like exactly where they're going to go, but it's something that's going on in the background, because it's, again, hopefully, something that we don't need to have these increases in capacity in the future. But if there are homeless individuals, we just need to have the ability to shelter them.
Certainly, and I can appreciate that. I, and I understand, you know, there's a lot of coalitions and organizations out there. I don't think a lot of people really understand the depth and the breadth of the homeless situation within Green Bay. I just want to be able to assure the neighbors who have come around to accept the Transformation House and the good that they're doing there, and there's been some real positive cases coming out of there. Obviously, the idea is to get them back into normal society and supporting themselves. I just want to reassure them, though, that when there's any emergency, now or in the future, that there's not going to suddenly be a group of individuals that could potentially be disturbing the peace and welfare of the neighborhood. And so another question I have for you, with the modifications and updates that have to be done to this facility to make it able for 54 more individuals to stay there, who's covering the cost of that?
That cost is being borne by the Transformation House.
Okay, so none of the funds that we've been talking about earlier today will be going towards that, at least right now?
So the funds that we are providing, or have provided for homelessness assistance, have gone to NUCAP, and NUCAP has used that to provide subsidies for either hotel vouchers or funds for accommodations at Transformation House or other facilities. So there are no intended capital expenditures with the funds that we're using. They're supposed to be used towards basically the short-term benefits. We are not putting any money into capital improvements with our funds.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your input, and like I said before, I am very much in favor of this. I think it's the right thing to do, and thank you.
I would entertain a motion to open the floor.
Motion to open the floor?
Second.
Second.
Made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. As was stated, we do have an individual representing the Transformation House. Ma'am, if you could just stick your name, your full name and your address for us?
Sure, Lisa Anderson, 266 Cathy Drive.
If you have any comments on the request before us?
First of all, I appreciate having the opportunity to be here today. I had the opportunity to speak at the meeting on May 11th and hopefully address those needs and concerns that the neighbors have had. I've only been with the organization since June, coming prior to that from St. John's Homeless Shelter, and so I've been working this for a while and really working towards some systemic change and recognizing the need for the transitional living in our community. In response to the COVID, what we saw were shelters closing, shelters at capacity, and so with our facility, purely from a standpoint of space and wanted to meet that need, and so on a very temporary basis, separated from transitional living into that emergency shelter, while maintaining all of those guidelines that our transitional living program would ideally, ideally maintain. And so we have partnered with New Cap in many ways, those conversations were had, a lot of meetings and planning, and really just trying to meet that immediate need. I would like to speak to the concern Alder Galvin has regarding post-pandemic, are there the next day 54 people that were pushing out the door? From a very real standpoint, yes, we recognize that this would require that we do that. What I can tell you is, can I give you, give you an answer of where those 54 people would be placed that day? Absolutely not. What I can tell you, however, though, is from day one, when they entered the, would enter the facility, we began working on those options well in advance of that anticipated date, and so, so all of the community partnerships that we've built, I'm part of the Homeless and Housing Coalition, I'm part of all of those groups that we regularly refer back and forth with our normal operating capacity, that we would continue to do that, notwithstanding it just being that last resort emergency shelter for pandemic or emergency reasons. And so I recognize that that's a concern, I've heard that concern from the neighborhood as well, and certainly take that to heart, and I'm certainly the last person that wants to be the one to put 54 people out, but recognize that we need to operate within our parameters as well. And so those relationships and that case management piece happens immediately, and how can we move that person to that next place? And what are the options? And so that's always a moving part for us. In response to just sort of the funding, we have absorbed that cost, we've had community partners, we've had some grant funding that has helped absorb those costs for us. As far as the upgrades to the facility and what the COP initially required, we have completed that work, which needed to be done whether we increased capacity or not, it just worked out that we were able to do that through our community partners that have come in and said, what can we do to help? Can we get bunk beds? Can we add another shower? Can we do that? And so we've had a great response there, and that work is completed. And so operationally, we are, we are, handle this on a limited-term basis and planning forward in terms of, so then when it ends, what do we do? In recognizing what the community need would be, but also allowing those people that don't have a place to go to follow those safe-at-home orders, stay healthy and safe like everyone else has the right to do. And so really, that's just what our focus has been in trying to accomplish this and, quite frankly, walking in there a week or so after pandemic hit and looking around, like we've got all of these rooms and all of this space, and I'm driving into work with people unable to get into shelter, really sort of just, it hit us in terms of our ministry, and so just wanting to be a piece of that puzzle and, you know, partner with those that were looking to work with us for a solution was just kind of where we all started. And so I appreciate, I appreciate the support that we've had from all areas of the community and the city and the county, at the county level, and all of our partnerships and coalition partnerships and things like that, and certainly welcome any additional questions or concerns that you have.
Thanks much for your comments, and thanks for the vital work of the Transformation House.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LeFave to close the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Further comments or questions on the item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Mayor?
Yes.
I thought Alder Burnett, I thought Alder Burnett wanted to say something, no? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? You guys have it, and the item has been approved, Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Tacs to approve Report O, which is the report of the Finance Committee from the meeting on May 12th, 2020. Any items to be held separately?
One.
The others?
Number five.
One and five will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay? You guys have it, the report has been approved with the exception of items one and five. Your wishes regarding item one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve, item was pulled by Alder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would be either for the Chair or the Finance Director, I guess. The Press Times, did they, their growing newspaper, have they been considered or were they considered?
I believe there are certain parameters that the press needs to meet, but I'll go to either Clerk Teskey or Director Allen Becker.
What I can tell you is what I, from what I remember, Calvin Winters, our procurement manager, saying that there was only one bid on this, when they went out for bid, that only the Press Gazette is the only one who bid on it. I don't have any other answers on that, I mean, must not have been.
That works, I appreciate it, so they had an opportunity to bid on it and they chose not to. All right, thank you.
Looks like Clerk Teskey has a comment.
Yes, before Rick Jensen retired, I questioned him on that, to make sure that we knew when they would have the opportunity to bid. Per state statute, they have to be in circulation in the community for two years before they can do that, so I believe next year will be the year that they could come forward.
Okay. Perfect, yeah, it's always good to have a little competition, maybe we can get that price lower, so, one year, good, thank you.
Alder. Any further comments? Motion has been made, and seconded, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You guys have it, on to item five. Your wish is here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Made by Alder Steuer, item was pulled by Alder Vanderleest, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor, I just would like to have my request just directed to the Mayor's Office and to the Financial Director, just as they go forward, to look at, you know, different things that, expenses that are coming up, you know, some of the reductions that we might have, you know, to the parking utility and, you know, other concerns that might come up, I think that, you know, it's worth taking a look at, you know, how we can protect ourselves as we get closer to our budget time and things, but just a request that, you know, they take another look at it, you know, at some of the things that are going on, and I'm sure they are, so I just, that's my request, thank you.
Is that a motion, Alder?
No, it would be a motion, I think, just to have it, you know, that you, the staff and the Mayor's Office would take a look at it, that would be my motion.
Second.
Made by Alder Vanderleest, seconded by Alder LeFave to refer this item to the Mayor's Office. Any further discussion?
Your honor?
Scannell.
Yes. If this is being referred to your office, are we expecting a report back, or what action? I'm not exactly sure what all we're voting on here.
Just from my perspective, you know, this would be as if I had a conversation with Alder Vanderleest, I'm not anticipating bringing any additional action other than, obviously, when we bring forward decisions that we feel need to be made in the short term with regard to the 2020 budget, those will be brought forth, and of course, presenting the 2021 budget will be happening in a matter of months, so certainly these comments will be taken into account.
Okay, so actually, you could do that, whether this is received and placed on file or we vote, I just, I'm not sure what the difference is, but it's fine, thank you.
Alder Gerlach.
Just to be clear then, so if we vote yes to receive and place on file, that is still what we're being asked to do, it sounded to me like maybe Alder Vanderleest was amending, I just want to be clear what I will be voting on.
Alder, you want to restate your motion?
Just that we would refer to the Finance Director and to the Mayor's Office for consideration as we move forward, you know, due to the financial shortfalls that we might have on the city of Green Bay. That would be my motion, then we'd be taking a look at, you know, different things that are coming about as we move forward, and just, I think that, you know, usually on the budget time, you know, we're not usually right on target on things, sometimes we're not, you know, informed in what's really going on, so I'm just asking that we just pay a little more attention of, you know, where the shortfalls might come, I know the parking did have shortfalls and different agencies, maybe Bay Beach, different areas where we're going to be, we're going to be short some funds, so basically, we could take a look at how we're going to weather through the storm, as you'd say. So my motion would be that you had the staff, you know, your office and the Financial Director would take a look at what I've proposed here, for different things that are going to take place as we lose funding, thank you.
Alder Dorf.
It seems to me that that's already covered under item four, which we approved, which was by Alder Johnson, to consider and discuss establishing a budget forecast process to position the cities to strategically respond to anticipated revenue shortfalls and additional expenses from the impact of COVID-19, and I just, I feel like we've already handled that, so I'm going to vote against that, the motion, just because I think receiving place on file is the appropriate motion here, thank you.
Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I, sounded like you were okay with this being referred to you for consideration, right? You weren't opposed, don't send me this request.
Yeah, as I said, I'm not anticipating taking any formal action on the request, but we'll certainly take it under advisement.
Okay, so then I, I think, you know, if an older person has some good ideas and the mayor's open to at least look at them, I think it's fine to refer it to them. That's under that request. So I'm in favor, thanks.
Any other comments? So the motion has been made to refer to the Mayor's Office and Director of the Finance Department, do we have a second for that?
Alder, one second.
You've seconded. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay?
Nay.
You guys have it, and the item has been referred. Personnel Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, who reported to Personnel Committee from the meeting on May 12th, 2020. Any items here? Hearing none separately? Hearing none, all in favor of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 The eyes have it, the report has been approved. Sustainability.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder LeFave to approve Report Q, which is the report of the Sustainability Commission, meeting on May 13th, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The eyes have it, the item has been approved. Place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to receive and place on file, the Municipal Court and Building Permit Reports for April 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 The eyes have it, the report has been received and placed on file. On the whole. This, I know.
Resolution.
We're flipping the order.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
So for committee on the whole, this is discussion with possible action on third extension of the proclamation extending the state of emergency for the city of Green Bay COVID-19 response. For this, we will go to Attorney Chavez and then Chief Litt.
Thank you, Mayor. So what is in front of you is just an extension of the proclamation extending the state of emergency for the city of Green Bay. There are no new provisions added to this, it's just an extension until after the next council meeting. There is, as you will recall, what is in the original proclamation, it's things like addressing the way that the city operates, which is, you know, limiting the number of people, or limiting the access to parks, canceling special events, creating or allowing the city to close its facilities and creating opportunity for us to conduct our meetings via Zoom and whatnot. So it's really, this is literally just about how the city is conducting its own operations at this time. In addition, because the, even though the state of, or the safer home order was overturned by the Supreme Court, does no effect on this, and the emergency conditions that existed, which formed the basis of this proclamation have not changed, so the recommendation of at this point from law department is to keep it in place for a number of reasons, first and foremost, because those conditions have not changed, there is no reason for us to back off of the current provisions that we have in place, that doesn't mean that the city can't make revisions as necessary, such as addressing when parks can open up, but rather than opening up, opening them up kind of at a free-for-all, right now, we are allowing things to remain closed so that we can address those in a orderly manner. In addition, you know, we are one of the highest curves, or one of the highest hot spots in the state, and so we don't know what's going to happen now that the safer home order has been overturned, and so leaving this in place allows us to act quickly if we need to. And again, everything that happens with this comes back to the council for determination anyways. The other factors you're considering is that, of all the municipalities that I have spoken to, and I reached out, I actually reached out to our lister to see if anybody was changing their directions or reversing course after the safer home order changed, the recommendation from all of the municipal attorneys and the direction they're receiving from their councils is for the emergency proclamation to stand in place for the very reasons of being able to address things should the need arise. So I have not heard of anybody who has rescinded or allowed their, say, their emergency proclamation to expire, so with that, I will stand for questions.
Your attorney. Alder Dorf.
Is there currently still any kind of state of an emergency order for the state of Wisconsin?
No. The.
Okay.
Orders from the governor has expired, and the safer home order was overturned due to the fact that rulemaking, and I shouldn't say that, it was declared unenforceable, so technically, I guess there is one, it's just an unenforceable order, and so, I mean, the conditions haven't changed, the direction is still coming from the Department of Health Services is to continue to act, in fact, they're actually recommending we take additional actions, but again, that's not what's before you guys tonight, what all this before you guys tonight is to leave in place what we've currently been doing.
And the reason I ask the question is because what we just voted on. And the reason I ask that question is because what we just voted on regarding Transformation House, um, is when the city is in a state of emergency. And if, so if we don't have an emergency order and then the state doesn't have an emergency order, then they, they can't do what we just voted on that they can do? Is that right?
I would actually recommend we keep the, um, emergency order in place.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, I agree. But it, but if somehow, I mean, I definitely am going to vote in favor of it. But if somehow it was not extended, does that mean that the Transformation House couldn't do what we just said they could do? Cause we wouldn't be.
So what I was gonna say is I believe that it's ambiguous. Like I think there still could be an argument that the safer, I mean, the, the state of emergency could technically be in place, but to avoid any, any question, um, yes, we should definitely keep ours in place for that purpose because then it's clear that the state of emergency is in effect.
Thank you.
Alder Galvin.
I have a question for Attorney Chavez. And actually I had one until she just said what she said and it greatly concerns me. Uh, when I voted in approval of the, uh, uh, motion and, uh, for the Transformation House, it was with the understanding that if there was a state of emergency that directly affected the city of Green Bay, that it would have to be a declared state of emergency by either the city, the state, or the federal government that directly affected our, our city. And if we do not have a state of emergency, then I'm concerned that, and I might have misunderstood that you're saying that we could still conceivably allow them to remain at that, the higher level of occupation.
So allow me to clarify. What I'm saying is that right now, there's, uh, there could be a disagreement as to whether or not a state of emergency exists at the state level. Um, given the, the emergency orders that came out from the mayor have, or from the governor have expired. Legislature has not taken any action on it to extend it. And the public health order, which technically hasn't expired, um, has been deemed unenforceable. So whether or not that order still remains in effect is questionable, which is why I would advise that we just adopt one at the local, or we, we maintain ours at the local level so that we are not in a situation of ambiguity of us determining whether or not we believe that a state level, um, emergency exists and under determine whether or not that he should, should be in effect.
Well, and, and, and I guess I appreciate that answer, but I don't want us to be caught in this ambiguity going forward, either now or 10 years down the road. And so I guess I'd like to get a more solid answer. Um, and, and I appreciate your, you can't give me that right now from what you're saying. But, uh, I, I'm concerned because 10 years down the road, we're all gone. There's someone else in place here. And someone decides to open up a, this facility, uh, for more individuals when there may not in fact be an enforceable, uh, emergency order in place like you're saying. So that's, we could set that aside for later. Um, my other question for you is if we do vote to extend the emergency order, I'm starting to have some concerns about, um, some of our city's steps because they can't leave their homes. Um, and I, I had an incident today where I asked, uh, some staff. I gave them a complaint from a neighbor and I was told I'd have to try and get the complainant to get pictures because he couldn't leave his home to go over to the address. And I, that concerns me in that so much with everything that's been out there about the CDC guidelines, PPE and everything else, which I've been told is available to staff, that, uh, they can't just get in their city car, drive over to the address. They don't have to make contact with anybody to get out and see if it is a valid complaint or not. And then we can start enforcement action. Um, and so I'm just wondering if there's a way, if while we're in a state of emergency, if we extend it, can we start turning the dial up so we can start getting staff, uh, back to doing at least some of their jobs that they were doing before? Thank you.
Yeah, nothing in the emergency prohibits that. Instead, um, all it does is allow us to, um, take actions should they need to be taken to the extent that they need to be taken. So you'll recall that when, when the City Hall got closed to the public, it didn't actually mean that people were no longer allowed to work in City Hall. Um, that got moved when the safer home order got pushed into place. So, um, they're, they're related, but it's not the same.
And so, so if I have a complaint about long grass, does that mean an employee can't go out and investigate that and send a letter to the homeowner so action could be taken? Or, I mean, um, I guess I'm.
Just to interject real quickly, I'll, yeah, but nothing that, um, that we declared in terms of the state of emergency stated that employees couldn't leave their home. Um, the, you know, departmental operations are by and large, you know, left in the hands of our department heads. So if you have specific questions about, um, planning or inspections, of course Director Bonk would be capable of, of answering some of those questions.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And forgive me if maybe it's a little bit repetitive, but I'm not sure if it is of Alder Galvin. Um, just for the public's sake, we, we are not, as a city, forcing any businesses to stay closed or limiting gatherings, correct? That's not what this does. And we're not looking to do.
Correct. All that's before you guys tonight is what our, our emergency declaration, we're not extending anything. Um, we, what we are looking at specifically tonight is the city's own operations, how we operate.
Now, along those lines, um, our parks, things like the baseball fields, I've had a bunch of calls about when, like Little League teams will be allowed to even just practice on them. Is that something we're going to be, well, I guess you're going to be deciding?
No, I'm not deciding that. That is something that is being discussed.
Staff, staff.
Yes, by department heads and then there, there's looking to the people who are knowledgeable in this area for those recommendations. Um, again, that was not something, so the closure of the, of the facilities, the outdoor facilities, such as the playgrounds and the fields, that came with the safer home order when the governor, through the public health officer, um, directed that all playgrounds be shut down.
So people could use the baseball diamonds? They might not be, you know, dragged and marked. It'd be in a little rough shape, but they could.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Um, so people could use the baseball fields if they wanted to, if they're going to go out there and practice, hit around. It's open for them to use it.
Is that we are looking at, um, or should say we, Parks Department is looking at the proper process to reopen stuff, um, to follow health guidelines.
As I, um, Alder, just quick to interject, as I stated at the front of the meeting in the mayor's report, obviously encouraging people to be outdoors and, and active in that way, if, if they're doing it responsibly. Um, you know, we will be, we've had conversations, the Director Ditchite and I, and we'll be having many more this week and into next week, trying to figure out how we can gradually, you know, in phases, um, but as quickly as possible, open things up in a safe way.
And perhaps, uh, Director, if you could even put me be an update and we could just ask you to at committee, because that's going to be the number one question here coming up, I think with Memorial Day, right, right in front of us is what can we use in the parks and when can we use it? I know it's a tough question, but we have to start addressing it. Um, Attorney Chavez, do you know anything about, um, the county? I think they approved something, but put in a provision that within 48 hours of the executive or staff invoking some powers they have to meet, um, or someone who was on the county board, Alder Van der Leest, Aldo LaFave. I just read that earlier today.
Yes, they did.
You yield to the question?
Yes.
Aldo LaFave, yes. Um, yes, we did put that in. Uh, there was a big discussion, two and a half hours on that and, um, that answers that. We did put that, uh, provision in that we would meet so that they didn't want to, uh, put all the control over to the exec, the county executive to make a decision on something very important if it came up. Um, the board had the ability to, uh, meet and to discuss it.
So I believe, um, Aldo, I believe the action that was taken was requiring a convening of the county board within 48 hours.
Yeah.
Of an emergency action being taken by the executive. And that would offer the board the opportunity to affirm or reject the order or policy put in place.
All right.
Um, I would just like to offer one thing, if that is going to be something that you guys would like to adopt for all, um, for something specific to this, that could be included in a, in an amendment to the proclamation. Um, if it is something you want, or all emergencies moving forward, do we need to be adopted by organs?
In, in reading what the county did, um, they described it as if broad emergency rules were, were invoked. Kind of, kind of vague, I guess, but, um, yeah, I, I would be looking to add something similar to that. And I'd make a motion of that effect if there's a second.
Would it be appropriate to handle that under resolutions, Attorney Chavez?
Oh, sure. Yep.
Okay.
That's fine. There we go. It's fine.
Very good.
Are we getting an update from the chief today?
Yes. Uh, if Attorney Chavez has concluded.
I'd like to speak to Attorney Chavez, please.
Mayor.
Start, yep.
Aldo Van der Leest, go ahead.
Uh, Attorney Chavez, when does the city actually plan on opening up their doors to the public?
I think that's a question for the.
Pardon?
I believe that's a question for the mayor.
Indeed. Yeah. And so Alder Van der Leest, this is a conversation that we had, that we've had multiple times, um, touching on it again with senior staff earlier today. Um, obviously that's the direction we are going. We want to make sure that we have all the PPE that's necessary, um, to protect staff who will be working in the building and protect members of the public who could be coming in to do business. Um, so we're not, we're not going to rush into it. Um, but it's absolutely something that we will, um, be endeavoring into within the, uh, the next few weeks or month.
Okay. Do we plan on having our meeting, uh, in person in, in June?
That I'm not prepared to commit to at this point.
I, I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, social distancing, you know, staying, you know, people wearing masks and, and, uh, you know, staying, you know, at least six feet apart. Uh, you know, I, I think they've lifted a lot of the, in other words, if we follow the social distancing, I think it's, you know, it's just like if you go to a store, if you go to a, you know, restaurants are starting to open and things. I, I think the social distancing, I think is just one of the requirements in, uh, you know, getting things back, moving in the right direction. If, if we follow those rules, I think that, you know, we could, you know, move things along a bit. That's my thought. Thank you.
Mayor, am I light on?
Aldo Brunnat, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the question is for Attorney. I'm just trying to piece this all together. On March 12th, we passed the original resolution, or proclamation, I apologize. We passed the original proclamation on March 12th and that was set to expire on April 17th. At some point, it must have been extended to April 24th. We did have a special meeting on April 9th. Uh, that was the couple of days after the election. And then we then passed the latest ones on April 21st and May 5th. So as my question is, all of the proclamations that, all of the language in the previous proclamations, if we pass this updated proclamation or all those original, uh, items and all those other proclamations included in what we passed tonight?
So there have been two amendments, I'm sorry, two extensions. The first proclamation, um, provided all of the, the meat and potatoes. The second one changed one deadline and added to the, um, or the first extension, I think, for the second time we addressed this. Um, added the provision for the safer, um, for the family's first coronavirus act, allowing for, um, paid time off, or sick leave, I should say. And then the third one just extended the deadline. And then this one is again, just extending the deadline.
So, but I guess my question is, like at the last proclamation that we passed, it stated that city employees would be paid their full salaries even if they're unable to report to work? If we pass the proclamation tonight, is that item effective all the way until June 3rd or June 2nd or whatever the date is?
I'm flicking it up right now, but I believe that only stated that it was, um, until, oh, I believe that deadline's already changed yet, so.
I guess what I'm, uh, the, the main question I have, Attorney Chavez, I'll get right to the chase. Hey, what, what exactly are we pa, I mean, I know we have something in front of us. Is it passing or are we updating things that we have already passed? Or there just seems to be a lot of, as far as I'm concerned, confusion on what it is we're actually passing. Cause if it's something as simple as, okay, we're in state of emergency, great, uh, we'll pass that. But what sort of things does that allow? Like for example, the original proclamation we passed on March 12th. The second item on the third page, it says, "All in-person meetings and gatherings involving city employees, staff, and/or elected officials are suspended for the duration of this emergency." It, if we pass this tonight, is that still in effect?
Yeah, so all of them are in effect. The only thing that has changed to this point, um, so there was one change from the original state of emergency and that was the deadline for which regular employees would continue to receive their compensation. That date got moved to April 24th. It has not been extended since. Everything else that's in the original agreement is what is, or the original proclamation is what you are extending.
Okay. I, uh, had sent an email to several people within city staff asking for the most recent, or the, the, the first, uh, proclamation to be sent out in the email to the council so that we all would know exactly what we're voting on tonight. Uh, was that email sent to the entire council? Uh, anyone can answer that?
I don't remember getting it.
I didn't get anything.
No. No, I didn't.
Yeah. Uh, I have no other further questions for Attorney Chavez. Uh, Mayor, if I could be recognized, uh, when we discuss what the action will be, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
If there aren't any further questions for Attorney Chavez.
Mayor, Mayor, I have my light on.
Aldo LaFave.
Yes, um, at our discussion last night at the county, it came up about, um, the grants that we are receiving. If we didn't pass our, um, resolution on this emergency, that, uh, there was a question, would we be in violation of that, of the grants? Would we, uh, would the government question our grants that we received? And Chad Wannaker wasn't completely sure on it. He didn't think there would be a problem, but he wasn't completely sure. I would like, uh, Attorney Chavez, is there a possibility if we did not pass this or extend our state of emergency, would that, um, cause problems with these grants that we are receiving?
To my knowledge, no, but I have not been the one administering the grant.
Okay. I just want that noted.
Thanks, Aldo. Any further questions for Attorney Chavez?
Mayor, just one. If, if you could, Mayor, this one, I, I, I think it might be more for you, but although Attorney Chavez could certainly chime in. What, what decisions are, I know, uh, Attorney Chavez has mentioned it's just related to city operations, but what decisions are currently being made that the emergency declaration requires that can't be made without it?
From my perspective, I think it's, you know, some of the things with regard to our meetings and, uh, and, you know, city properties that are currently not accessible to the public. Um, that's included in the declaration, but I, I'm not aware of any decisions that I have been engaged in, uh, in, in recent days that would be impacted by the declaration.
Okay. And so it was kind of alluded to before. So then it's, it's more or less maybe a request to, to have some time to talk about a reopening plan for the parks. Are there, are there other properties that, I mean, City Hall, I presume? Are there any others?
Uh, you know, Bay Beach is a big one, obviously. You know, we need to do some significant planning, um, to figure out how we, we could, if we could safely reopen it.
Okay. And is there anything from a, an emergency preparedness perspective that, uh, Chief Litten, um, has had to utilize?
uh, Chief Litten, um, has had to utilize the order for?
That'd be more of a question for, for the chief, obviously, um, once we, once we turn things over to him.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. So with that segue, we'll go to Chief Litten, uh, for his comments on the declaration and then make him available for questions as well.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, I guess, at this point, Mayor and Alders. Um, just a few things, um, the community way. This is. This week. We'll.
We can't hear.
It's the Friday. I believe they, and I think that they have, um, tested a total of approximately 10,000 people since the National Guard has been in the city. Some of the things that, uh, that have to continue after the National Guard leaves on Friday. The contact tracing, we still have provide. Or the constant for questions. Uh, there are a lot of still unknown variables out there as to what's going to happen. So we don't have a state declaration or a state stay-at-home order. Um, but we could still see, in the city, we could see that happening at, you know.
I don't know. Does anyone else? I, I'm hearing about half of what.
I can't hear.
Can't hear. Very little conversation here at all.
Alders, hold your comments. Chief, uh, you're muted there for a little bit.
Yeah, I, I lost my connection and it came back, so sorry about that. So, you know, that we still have some concerns about, you know, the fact that they're, you know, the virus hasn't left. We don't know. Um, you know, we, we've got, you know, continual, um, positive tests coming in. Some of the testing is, the results are being delayed because we've got, uh, quite a few tests going in now. So the turnaround on now, more three, four, five, six days, um, I'd turn around on the tests themselves. And so, you know, we're just concerned still that there could be some major outbreaks in congregate settings and, um, you know, other facilities that have, uh, once they get back to work. So there's a lot of unknowns, uh, still at this point. And, um, you know, the emergency declaration really just gives, from an emergency management perspective, you know, the ability to pivot and make decisions uh, that may have to be made, uh, immediately. And then of course, you know, the proclamation or under our emergency operations plan adopted by ordinance, we still have to convene the council. Um, you know, within, um, I think it is 24 hours, 24 to 48 hours of any major decisions that are made like that. So, um, I know from an oversight standpoint and all that, council's concerned about that. Um, and we recognize that. We, I don't think we've made any decisions that have been, uh, you know, with all the departments that have been rash or, uh, uh, you know, not thought out. So, um, I think it just gives us the ability to be able to pivot and make, if we have to, um, decisions. Um, where, where it may be, we have to move people out of, let's just say, we had a, a breakout at a long-term care facility and we had to move them somewhere. Uh, and we had to set up, um, another site, um, somewhere that might involve, um, you know, a, a lot of resources and, uh, and having to work with other facilities. So, those are just some of the things that are kind of hanging out there and, uh, things that we're concerned about still. Um, we of course know that people want to go back to work. We know that people want to get out of their houses. We just want to make sure that we do it in a kind of measured way.
Comments, Chief? Questions for Chief Litten? Alda Galvin?
Um, and Chief, if you, uh, this question, if you're unable to answer it, uh, and I understand that if you could just direct me to who I could ask, I'd appreciate that. Um, how many tracers do we have employed right now?
Yeah, I, I, I honestly don't know exactly the number. I know that we have, um, 35 volunteers that were brought in through the Weaver program. It's kind of a state-run program. Like the county itself has, I think, somewhere around 10 of their staff. And I know that there was additional, some medical school, um, uh, students and some, uh, nursing students that have been brought in. So I'm guessing that there's somewhere probably in the area of uh, 75 altogether. Um, I know that some of, I know the state brought in some more folks, not directly into Brown County, but I know that uh, Brown County can and has been referring some of the contact tracing to, um, those state resources that can be done, you know, basically from Madison. It's a lot of, you know, phone calling and, and things of that nature. So, uh, I am aware that that's going on as well.
All right. And do you know what the turnaround time is? I know, uh, from what I'm hearing that, uh, once a person's tested, it's taking upwards of a week, I was told today, for some of the results to get back. Uh, but I'm also wondering, what is the turnaround time to contact that positive person? Figure out who he's been in contact with since he was tested, not just since he was found to be infected. And then contact, contact those individuals so that, uh, we can try to contain this, so it, uh, we can spread the, uh, slow down uh, the spread throughout our community.
I honestly don't know the turnaround time on that contact, Alda Galvin. I can tell you that, you know, in, in each case, there's a lot of variables that could be that individual that, you know, again, the testing results have, have extended out now because of the amount of tests that are being sent to the state from, you know, state lab from around the state. There's 25 National Guard teams deployed out in the state right now. We have two of them in, in Green Bay. And so if, you know, for, if we're doing a thousand a day here, figure that, you know, the other sites are doing something, you know, roughly the same amount of numbers. So, um, you know, I, I can tell you that the testing turnaround time is anywhere from, you know, three days up to a week. Um, and that's varying, you know, day by day. Um, as far as the contract tracing and how soon they make contact on that, I honestly don't know that answer. Um, Chief Goplin is on the call as well. Um, he's been at the ELC and, um, he can chime in here. I'm not sure if he knows the answer to that, so.
Yeah, Chief, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, the, the, what Chief Litten said is, is very accurate as far as the time that the contact tracing actually takes. Um, there have, they have been handing off a lot of cases to the state. Um, but the, the big issue that you run into with contact tracing is how many contacts the person has had. Under the safer at home order, the contact tracing was going very quickly because people had very few contacts in, in a lot of cases. But as things open up and people are moving more, then that takes longer. Um, so really what drives that number, that, that timeframe is the number of contacts that people have had. And, um, I would say in some cases, they can easily do contact tracing on an individual, um, in about a day to a day and a half. And in some cases, it could easily be, um, probably up to a week. It's possible that we could try and get an average for you, but right now I don't have the, the average on hand. It just really depends. It's very circumstantial per case.
Okay. Understanding that then, from what you're telling me, there's a potential could be two weeks that a person could be infected before the health department is able to contact, uh, him to now determine who he's been in contact with for two weeks. And I understand you have no control whatsoever on how long it takes to get a test result back. I know you're not in control of the contract tracing, but who do we approach as a city or as citizens to see if some of this can be, you know, does more staff need to be hired? Um, you know, my, my concern is, one, we don't have the restrictions in place that we had, uh, you know, after the, uh, before the Supreme Court ruling. And the Brown County Health Department decided it wasn't legally feasible to, to set up their own policy. But who do we contact to see if we can speed that up? I'm thinking that if someone's infected and they're out there for two weeks, I mean, it's, it seems almost insurmountable to be able to try and control the spread of this thing.
Yeah, Alda Galvin, you know, you hit the head on the, you know, the, the, uh, nail with the hammer for sure, because we've identified that weakness from day one. And we have made that point on a daily basis regularly through, um, the statewide briefings that are, that are held on a daily basis. And, you know, we, we continue to bring that very issue up, um, and I'll tell you, as the state brought in, I think they said a thousand people, but again, those thousand people are assigned around the state. So, um, I know that whatever the county is referring to them, I know they're taken on, but, um, you know, what help is beyond, is there beyond that? I don't know, uh, how to answer that for you.
Alda Galvin, it's worth noting maybe that Governor Evers just announced a plan to expend approximately a billion dollars on COVID-related, um, efforts at the state and local level. So, there is $75 million being sent to local health departments to assist with tracing efforts. Um, but as you said, it's, it's a huge gap in our response as a state. Um, and, uh, and it's definitely hindering the work that we're doing when, you know, it's taking two weeks as an estimate to, to get back to people and figure out who they've been in contact with. So it's, it's an issue. There's no doubt.
So as a city government, do we petition the county government to start hiring more tracers? Um, instead of waiting for government from state or federal, or waiting for them to do the hiring, can, can we petition the, the Brown County Health Department to take some action to start getting this, this thing rolling? I mean, I think the city's been spending money that they weren't necessarily knowing that they were going to get reimbursed for, because we knew it was the right thing to do. And I'm just, I want to make sure that, that our partners in, in, uh, the community here are, are stepping up to the, the plate just as much as we are.
Yeah. I mean, I can only speak to the conversations that I've had with the executive, but from day one, he's been really interested in ramping up our testing capacity and the same can be said of our tracing capacity as well. So, you know, you've got communities like Madison and Milwaukee counties who have received in Ma, in, in Dane County's case, $95 million through the CARES Act. Um, Milwaukee County, I think in the neighborhood of 200 plus million dollars. Um, it's a huge gap in the federal response to this effort that communities underneath 500,000 population, um, have not received a lot of direct assistance related to, to COVID-19. Setting aside the CDBG allocation, which is obviously welcome, but, um, so it's, there are huge needs all across the state. Um, but I can just say, you know, I know that the county exec and, and the public health department are interested in doing this work. Um, it's, uh, it's just a, a real shortage of funds right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have a question for Chief. Mayor, thank you. Uh, Chief Litten, when this all began, I think in mid-March, I remember our first meeting regarding this. You had mentioned that the hospital system was over 90% capacity uh, at that time. Do you know what the hospital system is at capacity right now?
Alda Brunett, I do not know that. I, I can, can't tell you that throughout this time, um, you know, the whole purpose of this was to, you know, quote flatten the curve and to, you know, make sure that our, our hospital resources uh, were available for those that were sick. And to, and I am aware that, I don't, I don't know what the exact percentage is, but I know that there has not been a, a, a single instance, uh, in the four hospitals where, uh, there weren't the care facilities available for those that needed it.
So, so ballpark though, or I mean, are we still at over 90% capacity? Based on what I understand, there've been furloughs and us making people off?
I, I have no idea what the percentage is. It's a very complicated issue because the hospitals have to enter data in every single day. Um, sometimes it's in, sometimes it doesn't get in. And so for me to give you a percentage at this point would be, uh, just a wild guess on my part. And I'm not, I don't care to do that. So.
Sure. I understand.
But what I can say clearly is that there has been no one turned away. There has been no shortage of ventilators. Um, uh, during this, uh, you know, two-month period.
And when this began, as you mentioned, I, I heard flatten the curve, flatten the curve. I think that's all a goal we all could agree with. What is the goal right now? Is it still flattening the curve or is it contract trick, contact tracing? Is it vaccination? Like, what is the goal of the county right now?
Well, I, I think again, we don't know, you know, uh, just because the, the stay-at-home order was vacated. Um, I don't think that changes the, the, the fact that the virus is in the community in a, in a big way. Um, I think the goal right now is to continue to test for as long as we can. Once the National Guard leaves, I believe it's going to be that, that the plan is, is a transition to the, uh, health, healthcare partners, meaning hospital systems, uh, for them to continue to do the testing, uh, you know, as they're capable, uh, you know, of doing, uh, and then, you know, continue with the contract trace until the point where we see that, um, you know, the positive cases are diminishing for a period of longer than 14 days and, you know, some of the other benchmarks that are out there. Um, you know, so that I think that we can reasonably say that, you know, we've had a, we, we are past the, the bell curve, so to speak, uh, and, and moving in a positive direction.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks. I'm done.
That, um, I don't know that we need any action since we have the resolution in front of us. We'll, we'll move on to resolutions.
You may under suspension of the rules, adopt resolutions one through three, together with one roll call vote.
To suspend the rules.
Second.
I would suggest if there's an interest in having any debate on the proclamation, that we might just take up, uh, one and two.
Motion to take up one and two.
Made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stoyer to suspend the rules and take up resolutions one through, one and two. Through one roll call vote. And we will use the board. Pass 12-0, on to item three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Maybe Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scanell to approve item three. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none. Board. That is approved nine to three. On to ordinance's first reading.
You, you may under suspension of the rules, advance ordinances one and two to a second reading.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to suspend the rules. Um, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to advance items one and two. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, have it. And they have been advanced to a final reading. Positions and communications. Alder Dorf.
I have one and this is to protection policy. Um, this is based on a, some, a request by a constituent um, to reconsider the ordinance that would allow beer and liquor grocery pickup at the Skogan Foodliner stores in Green Bay.
Alder Stoyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. This one is the parks, uh, to get an updated report on the number of benches, signs, bike repair stations and other amenities on the West Side Trail. Also to give an update on the trail expansion plans for the northwest of Bond Street and into Howard. Second one is to IT or finance to include maps, charts and other graphics of the various department line items where applicable in order to make clear the city budget to the city council. That's all.
Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this one is similar but slightly different than Alder Dorf's. Um, refer to protect possible action on the creation of a click and carry ordinance. Because that one's more broad as opposed, it sounds like Alder Dorf is very specific to, to locations. So I don't know, Alder Dorf, if you'd be amenable to combining those?
Yes. I like yours better.
Good. Any others?
Mayor, Alda Lefave.
Go ahead, Alder.
Um, I have two. The first one is by myself and Alder Weary. This one goes to the park committee. Due to high water levels and recurring flooding along the Bay of Green Bay, uh, we, we are requesting the city.
We are requesting the city reconsider plans for a sand swimming beach and bathhouse at Bay Beach. Okay, number two, I think it would go to INS. You can let me know if that is correct. I am requesting that the city again offer sandbags to residents. On the bay for a nominal fee, including delivery. Would that be INS?
Yes, I think that'd be appropriate. Attorney Chavez?
I don't know where the original one started at. I would defer to Director Grenier.
The original sandbags came through emergency management and were taken out of contingency fund. So the fire chief, the emergency manager was the one who directed us to do that.
Okay, so where would this communication go?
In that case, I would say if we need a funding source for it, we should go to finance.
I have, and and my request is for a nominal fee, so.
So we would not be requiring the city to pay for it?
Depending on what they're going to charge. So maybe, shall we start at finance?
I would recommend finance.
Okay, thank you. And I did send those in late today to Chris Teskey's office.
Very good. Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Alder, you're muted.
I thought everybody was up on their lip reading story. This is for parks, submit for discussion, a plan for reopening city parks and City Hall. Because I think City Hall is under Parks, right? So that's why I put it there. Thank you.
Sir Teskey?
Can I just, like Alder LaFave said, if you could just send it to me, I really appreciate it because we need that in in a hard copy. So please email it and then I can get that to the proper. Departments. Thank you.
The others? Right, I'll entertain a motion to refer all petitions and communications.
Motion to refer.
Second.
Second.
By Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf to refer all petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it. The petitions and communications have been referred. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder LaFave. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nay, the ayes have it. We're adjourned.